Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the Davis School District Board of Education meeting. We're going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we lost our new student board members. Somehow, they got lost on the way down here. I'm just looking over there. We're going to give them just a minute to get settled. We've got some great opportunities tonight to hear from Bountiful High's Chamber Orchestra, and their students are here tonight representing the Student Advisory Council across the district as student leaders on our board. And so they'll be joining us on the stand. And we'll also be having public comment tonight. So I think what I'm going to go ahead and do is read our public comment rules while they get settled, and then we can just go right into that when the time comes. We'll be having public comment this evening for the individuals who signed up prior to board meeting. Those are two-minute opportunities for individuals who live in Davis County to give feedback to the board. It shouldn't be on items that involve a student or an avenue where there's opportunities for other resolutions that are options to solve things, especially special ed situations. We want to avoid those in a meeting. So we're going to go ahead. We've got our student board members this evening. We've got, the superintendent's going to introduce them. And we don't have the pledge on there, but I'm going to invite Kate to go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Everybody please stand. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to the superintendent. He's going to introduce our student leaders that are joining us tonight.
Thank you. And I'm actually going to have them introduce themselves. And you'll have a little more time a little bit later in the program, but if you could tell us your names and your offices, and maybe just something really cool about you, like why you want to do student government and be a leader.
Okay. Hi, I'm Simon Barlow. I am the SBO president at Bountiful High. Something that I like to do is I like to run track across country, and I am signed and committed to continue running at Weber State. And I like to do, I like, I like, I want to be an SBO, and I like doing SBO stuff because I feel like I'm serving the community, and it just kind of helps fulfill that kind of thing for me.
Hi, I'm Kate Nielsen, and I'm a student body officer at Bountiful High. I wanted to do student government to just be involved at the school and support its students. And I love to ski and hang out with my friends and just attend all I can.
Great. We love having you here tonight as part of our board, and we'll give you opportunity later to update us on things that are happening at your school. So thank you. We'll turn the time over to Ms. Shanda Stanger to introduce our musical performance.
Are we okay?
Okay. Oh, there we are. President member, Vice President Gerard, board members, and superintendency. I am pleased to welcome the Bountiful High Chamber Orchestra. So this is their auditioned group. And they, with all of the things that are happening at Bountiful High right now, we have several members who can't attend. So this is the group that can. They formed last year their Chamber Orchestra, and they are really excited to come and play for you. Last week, I have to share this because it's just like one of the power of arts and community, is they shared, they made a, helped fulfill a Make-A-Wish at the senior center where somebody, all he wanted to do was see a live symphony. And so they played outside of his room and provided that Make-A-Wish and helped that senior citizen last week. So they are going to play O Magnum Mysterium, and their director is Ms. Andrea Bell.
Thank you. Thank you, Bountiful. That was just a beautiful ensemble.
Mr. Robinson has a certificate to present to your group. We really appreciate you being here tonight with us in board meeting. That was just a really beautiful way to open our meeting and, and set a great tone for the work that we want to do on behalf of students across the school district. So thank you for sharing your talents tonight.
Yeah, this could be hard.
I honor the Jeff Bountiful High School Chamber Orchestra. We appreciate so much all that you do. You young people are great. We do so much. I think we have a lot of people here. I know we've got administration here, where's Principal Warnock? Mr. Principal. John is here as well, and Ms. Ludwig is here. She's the old choral player.
Huge thank you to the families that are here tonight, too. That's so great of you to be here supporting your students and driving those giant bases. I'm not sure how you get that thing around. So, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to our public comment. So the first public comment would, is by Ms. Jessica Horton. You'll have two minutes to speak at the microphone, and you'll hear an alarm going off over by the clock on that side of the room when your time is up. Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Horton. I live in Centerville. I'm the parent of four children, three of whom attend Davis School District schools. I am also one of the founders of Let Davis Read, a group of nonpartisan parents and citizens in Davis County who are dedicated to protecting students' right to read. Last week, the district removed eight books under its sensitive materials policy without any real explanation. Those books are: one, Breathless by Jennifer Niven; two, How Beautiful the Ordinary, which is an LGBTQIA+ anthology; three, Lighter Than My Shadow by Katie Green; four, Lucky by Alice Sebold; five, Storm and Fury by Jennifer L. Armentraut; six, The Almost Moon by Alice Sebold; seven, The Stand by Stephen King; and eight, This is Kind of an Epic Love Story by Case and Calendar. Section 6.1 of the district's sensitive materials policy requires the district to post the rationale for removing a book on the district's website. Historically, the district has provided detailed explanations stating why books have been removed. But for each of these books, the district's website simply states that the objective review committee determined that these books, quote, "contain a description or depiction of content defined in Utah law as objective sensitive materials," end quote. And that's it. None of the entries for these books identifies what material or passages the committee found to be objectionable. We are concerned that these books were removed without adequate explanation. Because the district's stated rationale doesn't include any actual reasoning, it's not particularly helpful to parents, students, or educators who want to understand why a book was removed. I suppose we can just take the district's word that these books are obscene in some way. But I grew up hearing LeVar Burton say, "You don't have to take my word for it," when talking about whether to read a book. The same thing applies here. We're not going to take the district's word that a book is objectionable without an adequate explanation. As parents and educators, we value transparency in the district's decisions, especially when a small group of people determines what books are available to all students in the district. We respectfully ask that you provide specific explanations stating why these books violate the sensitive materials policy. Thank you for taking the time to listen to and address our concerns.
Thank you for your comment about the sensitive materials. We'll have a member of the administration follow up with you. And a board member in your area as well. Looks like you're in Centerville. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Melissa Morley.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Morley. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Last year, I became passionate about getting suicide prevention information on the backs of all student ID cards in our district. I started by contacting a few high school principals in my area and quickly realized it would be best to contact our superintendent. And for context and for background, I'll just mention the following letter that I sent. Good morning, Superintendent. I'm a parent of students in the Davis County School District. My oldest daughter, Madeline Morley, a Umont High student, passed away unexpectedly on the last day of school in May in a hammock accident. A few days before she passed away, I had a conversation. I had a conversation with her about the student ID cards. They're blank. I discussed with her how awesome it would be to have the 988 Suicide Prevention information and a plug for the SafeUT app printed somewhere on the cards. By having the 988 Suicide Prevention number and a reminder of the SafeUT app printed on the student ID cards, something most students have with them regularly, they will be reminded anytime they use their card to help us just to text or phone call away. As a nurse, I know that adolescent brains are impulsive, and having this information easily accessible to them can be potentially life-saving. Although we couldn't prevent Madeline's accident, suicide deaths are preventable. Since Madeline's passing, our family has learned how difficult it is to lose a child, how it affects other students in our community, and how difficult it can be for first responders to deal with tragedies. Even if having this crucial information on every student ID card helps only one student, it will have been effective. Although we may never know how many this will help, I know the school year is here. You're very busy. I want to get this idea out to you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing a personal story and being interested in helping students in this area. I'll have a member of the board that represents your area, I believe it would be Mr. Robinson, follow up, as well as the administration.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's a lot of support out there. Just the dots aren't connecting on it yet.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's the end of our public comment this evening. We're going to move now into some great recognition for students in our district who've been involved with some amazing programs. So I'll turn the time over to Mr. Tim Best. I'm looking around for Tim. There he is. And he's going to share with you some of the great things happening with our Unified Sports.
Thank you, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, members of the board, Business Administrator Mr. Lefel, Superintendent Dr. Linford, and our awesome student reps up here on the board. It is my pleasure to talk about our state championship Unified Sports soccer teams. We had two from Bountiful High School and one from Woods Cross High School. So briefly, it was neat to watch the progression and just the advancement of their skill levels as they began just a few months ago at, you know, at the Legacy Event Center, and then down at the Angel Street Parks, and then down under the big lights in front of the Governor and the First Lady, down at the America First Field. And just watching those kids just work individually but also cohesively and collaboratively as a team really epitomizes what, what that's all about. And, you know, working with Tiffany Midgley and Jody Lahn and Kim Johnson and the rest of our Unified Sports Committee, we just do the framework, and then the schools do the bulk of the good work and the hard work. And I'm going to turn the time over to the principal at Bountiful High, Mr. Travis Warnock, so he can, Mr. Warnock can introduce his coaches and, and team.
Thank you. It's a good night for you, Travis Warnock. We've got lots of kids in the building from Bountiful, so go for it.
If we're in, we're all in. So Unified is one of our favorite things. As principals, we call it, it's the time we get to recharge our, our batteries. So it is our highlight. And I'd like to introduce our two Unified coaches, Melissa Valles. Come on in, Bountiful. Come on in. Don't be shy. And we had two teams win an award. We had the Red Hawks, which won the highest bracket, and then we had the Reds, which won one of the middle brackets. Melissa Valles and Michelle Zadunich are our coaches, and they're represented by a slew of participants. And it is our highlight of the year to go to Unified events. If it's not basketball, we even have now Unified eSports.
Awesome. So let us see your cool trophy. Oh, wow. That is awesome. Thank you. Good job. We're going to give you, we've got one more award for you tonight. Mr. Robinson is going to present a certificate with the superintendent, and I think your group is small enough, we can get a picture right here, since you're all gathered together. Let's give them one big round of applause. Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, this is our, is our first national banner Unified Sports Champion school, Woods Cross High School. We just, Kim Johnson notified us today that we have two more schools that added, are added to that list, and Davis High actually made it to the ESPN Honor Roll. So without further ado, I'll have Ms. Deanne Kapitanov come up and introduce her coach and teammates.
Good evening, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, board, superintendency. Thank you, and student officers. We love having you here. And Bountiful is in the house, and so is Woods Cross. Good. Great, great little rivalries right there. But the wonderful thing about being a banner school or being just involved in Unified Sports is the authentic relationships that are built during those events. And it's changed the culture of our school for the better, and we have just a great inclusive environment and authentic friendships, which I think is so critical for all of our students. So without further ado, I'll introduce coaches Cory Romano and Alan Weir, and have them introduce their team. This is the first-place winner at the state. So it was awesome to be at the stadium and watch both Bountiful on one field and Woods Cross on another. So come on in.
I'd like to say one thing. Whenever we leave for a game, the entire school is in the halls yelling for us and giving us high fives. It's a, it's amazing situation. We have Michael Abraham, Steven Butler, Caleb Trader. Let me say one thing about him. He has two state soccer champions under his belt, and two basketball championships under his belt. And so he's going for his third basketball championship. But he's amazing. And Will Leeger.
Thank you. And Mr. Alan is one of our coaches. We have two teams. His team, his team was the big winners. My team did really well, too. So proud to have these guys. And I mean, even beyond sports, Michael and Caleb and Will and Steven, they all do stuff within our schools, too. Caleb's on our youth activation committee for the state. Will's an SBO officer at Woods Cross, our Unified Sports rep. Michael and Caleb are both in our Davis School District Ambassador Program, which was started this year, which is pretty, pretty cool. And Steve is going to be taken over as our youth activation committee person once Caleb graduates this year. So proud of these guys.
Thank you. We are so proud of you guys. It's fun. I've heard you singing before in assemblies. You guys are multi-talented, and you're great athletes. So this is great celebration. If you'll bring that cool trophy, we'll meet you right by the flag and take a picture. So tonight we get to recognize one of our great office support staff that is the Secondary Secretary of the Year. That's in the whole state, so that's really impressive. And so I'll invite Mr. Dave Tanner to come up and share about that award.
Thank you. Thank you, wonderful school board. Superintendent Linford, Mr. Tim Lefel, good to see you up there. You know, this is kind of one of those bittersweet awards because it's given to just an amazing office manager in our district who's leaving. And that's a sad thing because she's been an icon at Layton High School for a long time. Anyway, this award, there's over 800 secondary schools in the state of Utah, and to receive this award is just a, it says volumes for who she is and for the training she's done for our district and for other people throughout the state. And so we're going to recognize her, but I want to have Principal Jackman come up for just a minute and introduce her and some of the great things she's been doing, and then have her introduce who she's here with.
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Deborah Haney. And Debbie has been here in the district for over 32 years, and she's been at a lot of different locations and done different things. She's been the office manager at Centerville Junior High, Syracuse High School, and most recently at Layton High School. And she is the epitome of everything we want one of our office managers to be. She leads well, she's welcoming, she has a sense of humor that just makes everybody feel welcome and at home immediately. And she just has a way of using that humor to diffuse tension when it arrives, and she just treats everyone with respect, and they walk away better for any association they've had with Debbie. So we're going to miss her, we love her, and she has been a great office manager and a great representative of Davis School District, and she is the very best of the best.
Debbie, why don't you stay up here for one second? Do you have family with you tonight that you want to recognize? Or do you want to say anything? I'll leave that up to you.
I have my husband here, Dave, who's been very, very supportive in the 32 years that I've been working with the district, and I love and appreciate him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's great to have you both here tonight. If you'll come up front with Principal Jackman and the superintendent, we'd love to get a photo with Ms. Gerard. They're going to just be right over there on your right by the, and yeah, your husband should come up and join you.
I just have to add a few words about Debbie because I hang out late at night a lot, and she's incredible. And the thing about Debbie is she's always smiling like this, and she stays so calm even in stressful situations. She's very efficient but kind to everyone, even if they have dumb questions like I do sometimes. So she's amazing, and congratulations. This is for you for dedicated and outstanding service to students in the Davis School District. Thank you and congratulations.
Do you want us to come this way just a little bit? So we don't have markers over our shoulders.
We appreciate you so much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move to some business items. First, we have information from different committees, and John Robison has those first two items. I'll turn the time to you, John.
Thank you. President Mumford, first of all, just a couple of things about Audit Committee business that is currently going on. Just a little background on the Audit Committee. We've had a few questions come to us regarding what's the Audit Committee and the, you know, who does the auditing and that type of thing. There's three members of the Board of Education that are on the Audit Committee, and those three individuals are selected to be on that by the, by the school board. And in our Davis School District Policy Manual, it indicates that the Audit Committee establishes an internal audit program that objectively evaluates the effectiveness of the district administration governance, risk management, internal controls, and the efficiency of operations. Now, that's actually a little bit of what you read in one of the state statutes, 53G seven dash four oh two, which I'm sure many of you read on a regular basis. But it outlines by law what we have to do relative to our responsibility as a school board, but specifically as an Audit Committee. Most of the work that the Audit Committee does prepares to bring back to the entire board a recommendation. Currently, we have the need to hire an outside auditor to come in, and it's a five-year contract, which is just expiring. So we work with our Business Administrator, Mr. Lefel, our Purchasing Director, Ms. Peterson, and we put out to any auditing companies the fact that that opening is there. It closes soon, and then the Audit Committee will be interviewing those who apply, and then again, make a selection on our determination as Audit Committee members will bring that again to the board for their approval. We have, right now, a company that's in Denver, Colorado called BDO. We have the option to hire our own internal auditor that the board would oversee. So you can do one of two things in relationship to auditing based on the state guidelines, and we've chosen to hire that outside auditor. We also have, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lefel to explain a little bit, on one other element of the auditing program that we are required to be doing. In fact, we just finished that today and got a summary of the audit from the Squire Company. So Mr. Lefel, if you would, please.
So Squire and Company is our third-party auditor, third-party auditor that is specifically charged to audit our financial statements. So they are driven by state law, by the State Auditor's Office, and by the State Office of Education as far as their scope and what they do, as opposed to BDO, the board's internal auditor that is driven by the Board Audit Committee. So a different focus on what they do. They look at our financial statements at the end of the year, they look at internal controls, and they basically give us an opinion as to whether our financial statements are accurate. And that's the report we received tonight in Audit Committee.
So we are very grateful for the organization that the state has for us to be able to follow, stay within state guidelines. Again, just stay within the rules and regulations and laws that, that allow us to do the kinds of things that help make the district not just financially soluble, but making sure that we are doing the kinds of things that we need to do and are required to do with the money that we receive. So we will probably board, we likely will, as we talked today in our Audit Committee meeting, I would imagine January, President Mumford, which you won't be here, but somebody will be in your seat.
Yep.
And the Audit Committee will bring a recommendation, I believe, at that time for you.
Perfect. I'll make a note for their agenda planning. Thank you.
And then we are currently, just again, for board information, we're waiting for BDO, again, our outside auditing company, to complete the self-insurance audit. I spoke with Ms. Madder this, this week. There's a little difficulty in relationship to gathering some of the data, and I think she's, again, she's worked a little bit with Mr. Lefel. But President, I'm not sure December that will be ready. She's going to let me know later this week, and I'll communicate with you to whether or not that'll be in the agenda.
We'll schedule that. Yeah, recognizing that working with different medical insurance providers is really complex when they're talking about HIPAA guidelines and, and different reporting structures. So we will adjust to their timing.
The other theme, President, is the USBA report. Utah School Board Association, I currently am on the Board of Directors for the Utah School Board Association, which oversees the work of the 41 school districts. There are in the rural areas, depending upon the enrollment. There are sometimes three districts that are represented by one individual from one of those three districts, but a large district like ours, we are fortunate to have an individual from the board on the Board of Directors. President, and well, really, I would probably talk to the five remaining board members. Ms. Mumford and I are going off the board latter part of December, but I really think with some of the things that the Utah School Board Association is doing, that it might be beneficial, board members, to have on the agenda a regular, at each business meeting, update on USBA advocacy. I just handed you a handout. There are two committees that are currently working, the Legislative Committee and the Utah School Board Association Advocacy Committee. We are working to try to gather and then disseminate information to all of our fellow board members throughout the state, and you can read through that yourself. I don't want to go through and read that, but you can see that this is really meant to try to get information out early, so school board members are aware of what's going on and can communicate to their constituencies. Also, at the very bottom, it's interesting, the very last thing on the, on the handout is to activate school community councils, which our district is ahead of the game right there, as we've been attending those meetings recently. I think that going forward, again, I would just say to the five remaining board members, as you make a selection for the individual that will assume that role as a member of the Board of Directors, it's a critical role. I've gained a great appreciation for the input that that individual can have on that committee, but also, you know, in relationship to what happens throughout the state. So you'll be doing that in January, when the two new board members come on, and it's a great opportunity. I greatly appreciated that. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Mr. Robison, and just wanted to take the opportunity to express appreciation for your chairing the committee with the audit that's been more complicated this year, where we're renewing a contract and also having some really in-depth audits. So thank you for that. For the board's information, there's a copy of the ACFER, that's the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, at your desk. Those will also be posted online. That's public information. So that'll be on our website with all the previous years, if anyone's interested in that. And it's important to know that Squire gave us that we presented fairly in all material respects, which means the audit was clear and everything looks good. So the detailed information will be on the website. I'll turn the time next to Ms. Emily Price to update us on the foundation.
Okay, so I'm going to be updating for September and October. And just during this season of gratitude, the foundation wants to express our gratitude for our community members and donors who invest and care so much for the students in Davis School District. Here are some of the things that have happened the last few months. Hogan Construction, we want to thank them for sponsoring our Four Kids Golf Tournament. And then Chevron for supporting the MAC Conference at Weber State University. They provided $15,000 for the event, and we were able to see, that was talked about at our Belonging Council meeting that we had last week. I want to say thanks to Big O Tires and the Coleman Foundation for sponsoring the United Sports Soccer Teams. And we're so happy with our district, region, and state wins, and it was just fun to be able to see those state winners tonight, to see them represented and to be able to give them a round of applause. It was, it was good to see those kids. We want to thank the Murdoch family and lifetime for supporting and sponsoring the new Unified Ambassador Program, and it was on October 23rd and 24th, 24th, and it was our first ever ambassador program where six special education students were chosen to represent the Unified Program in Davis School District. And these students will share their voices with schools throughout our district about unity, belonging, and leadership. And I was able to attend the second night of, of this, the actual program where the students shared their talents. And it was amazing. It was, it's been one of the best events I've ever attended as a school board member. And to see those students getting up on stage and performing their talents, I mean, it was, it was heartwarming. It was just tears of joy and just, it was wonderful. And so I hope that this is something that we can continue throughout the years. It was fun. I saw two of, two of the ambassadors, they were here with Woods Cross, and I was just thinking about them and their cute talents that they shared. But I hope that in the, in the coming years, that we can pack the auditorium wherever it may be, because it is, it's phenomenal. And I'm just, we're grateful for our sponsors and then for the team that facilitated it and made it happen. It was incredible. I also want to talk about another addition to our recognition program. It's called, it's called Excellence in Education. And so each month, four teachers are recognized for their outstanding work and excellence in our classrooms. The unique aspect about this program is that our recipients then select a student to receive a $200 scholarship, and that $200 scholarship goes into a 529 plan. And so it's really cool, like we, we were able to go to the Clearfield Cluster last week, and the elementary teacher that was selected, she's a kindergarten teacher, and so here's a tiny little kindergartner that she'll get to choose that will have this $200 that can grow for the next, you know, up until they turn 18 and use it for educational purposes. But I think that that's just a really cool component. And so we just want to thank Murdoch Automotive Group and the Murdoch family for providing the funding for this award program. And so to date, we've had eight teachers receive those awards, the Syracuse Cluster and the Clearfield Cluster. And I'm not sure who's next, which cluster is next, but we'll have some, do we have them in December?
They'll be in December, March.
Okay. So yeah, if you want to attend, it's, it's great. And those teachers are selected based on their, where's Logan?
Based on their academic outcomes from end-of-year testing and prior-year positions.
Yeah. And it's really cool, like we went to North Davis Junior High, and the class, the students of the teacher, they were so excited for her, and, and they wanted to see what, what she got in her gift basket, and it's just really cool to see these students be so excited about their teacher and just the excellent work that they're doing in our district. I want to thank Young Automotive Group for the incredible trunk-or-treat event that was on Saturday, October 26th. And we want to thank our friends at Marathon for sponsoring the STEM Expo, where more than 900 high school students and thousands of students and families visited and explored options and opportunities in the STEM fields. And then Boeing for providing $40,000 for hydroponic, hydroponic lab farm-to-table at the Catalyst Center. And here's just a few upcoming events to be aware of. And can we ask Ginger to send invites to all of the board members? Okay. So we're going to have our, so right now, it's ongoing, it's the Junior High Child Spree. And so we've partnered with Amazon, more than 500 students have a registry, so you can join us by feeling Santa's sleigh. If you've not received the link to shop, Jody can provide that. You probably have seen it, though. Each school has an ornament that represents, you know, so if you want to, if you want to shop for a specific school, you could reach out to Jody's office to see what your school, it's for the junior high students. And then we have Elves and the Shoemaker. It's our annual heartwarming event, and it will take place in eight of our elementary schools, and we invite you to join in that. And I was able to participate in that last year, and that's really fun, to be able to help these little kindergartners. And we actually put new shoes and socks on them, and it's just exciting and heartwarming. Do you have a date for that?
I have eight of them, and they'll be on the Catalyst. I didn't have a route to announce, but I have eight, December 10th through the 20th.
And you can just pick and choose, like if, if only one works, that's great. We're happy to have you there. And yeah, it's really fun.
We're going to go do some brief board member updates. We'll start with Ms. Barber.
All right.
All right, a lot of mine has been covered already, the Audit Committee, thank you, Board Member Robinson, for updating that. I wanted to mention, last week, we got to attend an update with the Belonging Council, and that was really fantastic. It was good to see all the members of that and the progress that the district has made. So that was fantastic, being part of the accreditation process as well. So thank you for letting us be part of that. Is it okay to say that it was a really great experience? And I, it made me even more proud to be part of Davis School District, so that was fun. I have on this upcoming week, attending three different high school, Beauty and the Beast plays, so I'm really excited about that. And I attend a lot of swim meets, and I'm thankful to a couple of board members and staff that joined me specifically at a swim meet last week at Leighton Surf and Swim. So that was really good, and a huge thank you for the pool update that we had at workshop. So if you were here for a pool update, we did that in workshop just barely, but we'll be bringing it back in our next meeting, so in a couple of weeks. That'll be great. And then just some great school visits, I got to visit Doxy Elementary, and then I also got a special tour at Catalyst Center, and I tell you, they know how to make you feel welcome there. They like put my name up on the board and took me around, and it's just a really cool place, so I encourage you guys to reach out. They have some fun events coming up, so you can go learn about everything at Catalyst Center, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. I got to go to my first ever soup with the soup, and that was a really cool event. Kristin and I were able to go for the Syracuse Cluster and to just recognize these outstanding students, and, and they were selected for, for different things, and it's just, I, I love that the school gets to decide who they're going to choose and, and, you know, what they're, what they're highlighting for each student. I've been to a lot of community council meetings the last few months. I already mentioned the Unified Ambassador Program, and I've attended my, my committee meetings, but we were able to have the Elementary Two Groundbreaking in Syracuse, and that was a really great event, and loved that we included students, potential elementary students, and then also our high school students at Clearfield High, their band and their cheerleaders, and did they have officers there, too? That was really fun to have students involved in that. I, I went to a cheer showcase at Leighton High, and I wouldn't normally report on a cheer showcase, because I, I go because of my daughter. But Leighton High, they did something really interesting, and I just want to give them a shout out. It was, they included their mini cheer clinic in with the showcase, and so they had their elementary students perform alongside junior high and high school teams. But what stood out to me is that these five elementary schools were part of a program through Robbie Kinghorn and federal programs, where it gave more students an opportunity to participate in the event. And it was just really a great community event to see all of these elementary school students there, to get involved in a sport that maybe they wouldn't normally be able to participate in, and to see the cheerleaders be the teachers, and to help those students, and then to see them perform and to see their family members at the event. So it was a, for me, it was a really unique opportunity, and I just want to shout out to Leighton High School and to their cheer advisor, Mandolin Martini, and her team, and, and Robbie and his team. So that, that was just really cool, and just to see some of the different things that we're doing in Davis School District that, that help our students. And then, yeah, I'll stop there.
Okay, well, I had a lot of the same things as Emily, so this will be quick, but the Elementary Number Two Groundbreaking is just down my street, so I was really happy to be there, to be able to speak there and explain how everything has changed in my neighborhood, and we have all these new friends and neighbors there, and we're so excited to have a school being built there. And I've already gone to see Beauty and the Beast, so I went last weekend at the Syracuse High production, it was really wonderful. And then last month, I went to Clearfield High on a Saturday morning, it was Service Blitz, they called it, with the community schools and Clearfield City, and we did some work on a flowerbed at Clearfield High. So that was fun to be a part of that. And lastly, I went to some of the Classified Employee PD Day that they had, where they had training and classes and a certain band, I guess, was there playing for them, and it was fun to be a part of that with that group of employees that do so much for our kids.
Okay, it's been a busy, busy month, hasn't it? First of all, loved the visit, I was able to go on to EG King Elementary. Great visit with Principal Johnson, her, her administrative interns, the PTA president there, and we were able to honor Ms. Andrea Anderson with our Be the One Award, and she is a teacher's assistant in one of the special ed classes and just doing amazing things for kids and putting extra effort in every day, so that was great. It was nice to be involved a little bit in the accreditation, and there were so many who put so much work into that, our superintendency in Kelly and Darren, but it was great to meet them and to hear their accolades for our district and, and heard a few areas in which we can improve, so that was great. I also enjoyed the Belonging Council, and the thing that was so great about that is to be able to get community input. I want to thank, again, our superintendency and the work that they put into that, and to be able to meet with community members and, and hear what is important to them, and just, just gather their thoughts and their opinions, and it helps us to be a better district, so that was great. I have been to several community council meetings, Davis High, Leighton High, and just so appreciate the work of our community councils. And then the community council meetings, I went to the one at Northridge for our cluster, and Dr. Toon spoke at that one about the work that we're doing, inclusion in higher reliability schools, and to be able to meet those community council members and have them have discussions with their principals, it was a great meeting. And really enjoyed all of the Veterans Day programs, I was able to attend several of them, and that's just always a special treat every year, to hear from our military servicemen and some of their families and some of our students, and able to enjoy a program at, at North Leighton Junior, and Whitesides Elementary, and Crestview Elementary, really, really good programs. So grateful for the dedicated service of our military members. Emily said so much already about the Unified Ambassador Program, and, and I agree with everything she said, but that was a very touching, beautiful program, and I hope it continues to grow because it was amazing. I had an opportunity to be a guest lecturer at Salt Lake Community College, so that's a little bit out of, out of our realm, but, but I just wanted to mention it because I was just so grateful for the young people that we have, and our, our students, they go through Davis School District, go on to higher ed, many of them, and they are our future leaders, so it was great to meet with them and, and see the enthusiasm, enthusiasm that they have and what they will contribute to society, so that was a great experience. Looking forward to attending some of those plays next week, I have my tickets. Just wanted to remind you that you have till December 1st, that's looming, to complete your Master Board Certification for the Utah School Board Association, due by December 1st. And if you're having trouble login, logging in, go back and look for an email from Megan Mendez. If you can't find it, just text me, and we'll send out another one, so you can get registered and get that finished. It's, it's a great learning opportunity for all board members and a reminder for those that have been around for a while, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
I know you guys want me to take another 20 minutes.
Sure.
I'm going to be, I had a lot of things, there's a lot that went on since our last board report, so I'm going to try and make this short, so. I did attend a district community council training, I have a lot of background in community councils, so I really appreciate that. Dr. Greg Wilkey led that, and I appreciate that's on Zoom, it was much easier to attend that way. And as well as the community councils now at Davis High, we were able to talk a little bit about belonging and HRS, and just have some little group discussions, which was nice to do. I, I'm a really big supporter of community councils, because it's, the legislature has established it as a way for parents to have a say in their local community, and obviously it's not just parents, but at the local level, and that's something that the legislature appreciates, and, and I do, too. I had policy committee meeting, we had an audit, audit committee meeting, and actually a couple of meetings, but I do want to just shout out to Tim Lefell and his team. They are very organized, I just want to say, they make it easy for the auditors to do their work, and I just, sorry, I mention all the time, I'm an attorney, but when, when I have a project to do and I need my client to give me information, when the client gives me information, it's so much cheaper for me to do their work and efficient. And I, I just want to say, I feel like our finance team really does a good job, and just getting all the information into the Audit Committee, they just do such a good job, and I appreciate that. And, and as he'll, he'll present, our district does very well. Let's see, I also went to Beauty and the Beast, and I'm just amazed at what a quality, high quality, I, I literally was, like, shuddering a few times, I'm like, wow, I cannot believe what a high-quality production it was. And shout out to Michael Wright, the director, as well as all the people involved, it was just amazing. I attended a Snow Horse, at Snow Horse Elementary and Apple Distinguished School event. I appreciate the dedication of the teachers and the staff there, it, it's extra work to go and, to go and do all that stuff, and so I appreciate the extra effort they make, too, on behalf of the students. We went through an accreditation process, and of course, no one expects Davis District not to get accreditation. Then, then so many good things were mentioned, I, there was a couple feedback, a couple bits of feedback that they mentioned, that I, I just, as a board member, I get the same type of thing, maybe let's focus a little on not having the kids have so much computer time, especially as homework. And then too many trainings, I get that feedback a lot as well, like, sometimes the employees are overwhelmed with the amount of trainings, and we can maybe pay a little more attention to that, that would be great. I also did pool visits, went to Skyline in the University of Utah, also attended a Leighton, a swim meet at Leighton High. And it was good to see the needs firsthand of the students, as well as during the pool visits, I was able to ask a lot of questions, because as a board member, one, one big concern I have is about the finances, so how we can get, keep costs down and, and how we deal with the budget matters. And that's it.
I went to two places, I went to Costco, and I also went to Les Schwab this month. I just have one thing to report on, and I'm going to invite Ms. Sue Caldwell to come up, if you would. Last night, I went to the Community Refugee Night at Viewmont High School, it was one of the most impressive evenings I've ever spent. My wife and I attended, and I think Ms. Caldwell, close to half the auditorium was full. And what I wanted Ms. Caldwell to just, in a, in a real couple of minutes, just talk about the advocates, the, the family advocates, would you please?
Absolutely. It's, it's an honor to be able to present in front of you tonight, so thank you, Mr. Robinson, for this opportunity. For the past two and a half years, we've had a grant that has been specifically geared towards our refugee families. And with that grant, we have four family advocates, and their job is to be the liaison between these refugee families and the school, and to help them get acclimated to the area, to the city, to try to help them find what they need to find, and, and then also be able to make sure that their integration into school works out fabulously for them. On the other hand, we have five student success coaches. So we have 100 refugee students in the district, and those students then are tracked and, and worked with from the five success coaches. So we have the family advocates working with the parents and the families, and then the success coaches working with the students to help them get integrated into the school system and help them be successful there.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. There were a lot of things talked about, they had a little panel, there was two students, an 11th grade girl, an 8th grade boy, and then two parent, two mothers. They were, one, the mother, one mother was from Ukraine, daughter, one of the 11th graders from the Congo, and the young man was from Afghanistan, I can't remember the country that the other mother was from, but, you know, I could tell you a lot of things, but this, this is what I want to share with you, is every single one of them, the kids, as well as those two parents, made comments about how much they appreciate the teachers, how the teachers in our buildings and the administrators, but they really, they really emphasized the teachers, how they welcomed them, how they helped them. The one mother from Ukraine said that she had spent some time in Arizona, some time in California before settling here in Utah, and she said, I'll tell you, that Utah is so much better than any other state we've ever been in. The people and the schools are so nice and so welcoming. So, you know, all the work that we're doing is in relationship to belonging and making kids feel that they do belong. Last night was a manifestation of something that, that I've always known, and I think I can speak for the people in this room that are educators, we've all known, and that is the quality of people that we have in our buildings. It was, it was just, it was so rewarding to hear particularly those two kids who spoke about this, and, you know, we can only imagine what these people have been through, but to know how, how well they, how, how good they feel now because of our educators, it was very, very heartwarming, and, and it was, it was just a great evening to be there. So I'm very appreciative of that program, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, great program, and thank you for representing the board there. We hope that there's continued success as those families become part of our community and that they feel that welcome. Kate, and then Simon, we're going to go ahead and turn the time to you.
Awesome, and we're kind of going to switch off about a couple of things about Bountiful High, great.
Okay, at Bountiful High, our goal is to support our students in their efforts academic-wise, athletic-wise, in the fine arts, and as well as in student organizations.
Yeah, and it's been so neat, as a student government team, we try to promote those things that our school works on. So next week, we have a school-wide event where all our clubs and student organizations are putting together decorations for our school, which further promotes our awesome school environment where students want to be.
Yeah, another, another fun thing that we have at Bountiful High is we just recently got a brand-new football field, track, and baseball field, which we are so grateful for, and it allows our athletes, as well as other members of the community, to be able to exercise at a higher level.
Yeah, we're grateful for all the things that the district has put in place, as well as the state efforts to put in teen centers. In the high schools, we've seen lots of success with our teen centers, and it's been really neat to support the students from the ground up.
And then a couple of our students have had success in, like, our fine arts, like our, our production, Mamma Mia, which is currently going on right now, is a great production, and I would highly recommend going to it.
Come see it, a lot of you guys like Beauty and the Beast.
Yeah, it's a really good one. And then our football team is playing for the state championship this Thursday at Rice Echols. We are so proud of them for their great season and their hard work to get to there. Our volleyball team just finished runner-up in the volleyball state tournament, and then we had a couple of individuals have success as well, like Hayden Hooper winning the 5A Cross Country title, and Matthew Nadal winning Nationals in wheelchair tennis doubles.
And on top of our awesome teams, we have really awesome student athletes that have, or scholars that were awarded recently, and so we're really proud of our amazing students and faculty and administrators at Bountiful High, so we're excited to finish off the calendar year and the school year with lots of success at Bountiful High, so go Redhawks.
Thank you, Redhawks, we appreciate you being here.
We appreciate you being here. So I guess the backstory is that Disney's putting Beauty and the Beast in the vault, so everybody's clamoring to do it before it's put away. But I'm glad that Mama Mia is an option, so thanks for sharing that. We appreciate you being here tonight. Board, our last section of information items is the superintendent report. And I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Dr. Linford.
Okay, and for a portion of the report, I'll have Dave Tanner and Rick Astle, our, two of our secondary directors, to spend some time talking about our cellphone policy and some of those things. But I wanted to quickly just mention a couple of things. First of all, great night for Kate and Simon to be here. It's, and maybe it's not lucky, it's just how it is. So many great things happening at Bountiful High School. I get to work with these two in our superintendent's advisory council. And they're both just, you know, you can see it, they ooze it, but they're just exceptional leaders, and they're kind and gracious. And they're two of the people that get the conversation going. They're approachable. And even with the board before we came down, you know, Kate's introducing herself to everyone. Just a couple of really special officers that we rely on to really do great things in our SAC group. I wanted to echo what was said about Kelly Madrow and Darren Connect. Incredible work, work that, you know, it's a million dollars worth of work, and we're not going to pay them a million dollars. So thank you so much for those two. Really, really excellent, excellent work. And I can't say enough that really, when you compare it to the country, which is what our creditors do, it's, it really is world-class. It's not just a line that we say. Quickly, I want to mention that one of my elementary directors, Doug Forsgren, it's his birthday tonight. And he's having what I call an adult birthday. He's at work, so thank you, thank you, Doug, for being here. Sorry to your family, okay? And then, Farmington High School, I just can't, I feel like Phoenix in the room. I just feel the heat from the audience. I think there's a lot of, Ms. Allred, you know, thank you for sending so many students here tonight. Can you guys give her some love when you get back to class? Say, you know, we were recognized, Farmington High representing. I'm assuming the young people in this room are all like here on an assignment, yeah, mostly, okay, okay. Do we have any other schools besides Farmington here? Good just Farmington, excellent, excellent, way to show up. And then, just wanted to, we typically don't respond to our folks that make public comment, but I wanted to note, we've accepted that idea to put the suicide hotline, the Safe UT, and our HDERS information on the back of our badges. We did that last year. This year, I think there were some assumptions that they would continue to be on the badges, and they weren't. When I communicated with Ms. Morley, we agreed that we'll do that next year. It was too late. But I know my directors are working on a sticker for that, to add to the badges. And then, also, I also attended Beauty and the Beast, and excellent. Yeah, you're right, I was ever, I had the narration for the Davis.
We heard about it.
It was really good. No, it was really, really special cast. One of the things that I loved the most is I was walking through the school with my teenage son, who I had to force to go. He looked at me and said, this is really good. Yeah, I know, okay.
Did he like the narration?
Yeah, he really loved the narration, okay. All right, Mr. Tanner, Mr. Astle.
All right, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, wonderful school board, President Linford, or President, Dr. Linford, and Mr. Tim Lefell, thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Linford for these amazing seats that we're sitting in. So, these are amazing. You can sit, and it feels comfortable for a little bit longer than the other ones. So, thank you very, very much. So, Rick and I are just going to share some thoughts and stuff, and just kind of give you an update of our current cellphone practices in the secondary school setting. So we asked our principals to do a school policy involving their school leaders, their JSSEs, or their community councils as well. And so we're just going to talk about where we are with this currently. And we sent out a survey with a myriad of questions, just to get some information that we can report back to you on as well. And currently, of our schools that we surveyed, 17% of those surveyed allow the phone to be used in the classroom. And they've allowed the classroom teacher to be kind of the gatekeeper of those cellphone policies within their classroom space. 86% of those that we surveyed, and there is 30 that we surveyed, allow time to be used in the hallways when kids are going from class to class, or in collaborative spaces. 97% in the cafeteria, and 100% of the schools allow them to be used before or after school. And I already mentioned this in this one slide, excuse me. But the people that were involved in some of these policymaking changes were the community councils, joint staff-study council, staff and administrative teams. So one of the questions we asked was, how involved was your community council? And 33% said somewhat, 58% said extremely involved. And we had a couple of schools that just use their joint staff and their staff, joint staff-study council and their staff. And you might say, well, who's that, or why? And it was basically Renaissance Academy, who does not have a community council, and our adult ed schools, so. But all the other schools use their community councils to help in a somewhat or extremely impressive way. And it's kind of interesting, because just this month, in our NASSP magazine, our National Association of Secondary School Principals Magazine, they posted a survey that they just did, and they sent out 30,000 surveys to principals and assistant principals, and got their responses. This was a nationwide survey. And administrative teams reported that 87% of their teens in secondary settings are distracted when they use their cellphones in the class, the learning, and that's obvious, you know, to most of us. 85% reported that technology has increased the bowling incidences in the schools, and before school, during school, after school, and it just continues. And then, 74% feel like the students are a little bit more depressed and lonely because of the cellphone and that self-indulgence of the cellphone. So what did our survey say? So, principals reached out also to their teachers and staff. And the teachers said that their current cellphone policy that they have incorporated for this current year has increased engagement in the classroom setting. It's made positive, many made positive comments, or from the teachers and parents have made positive comments to the administrative teams with these updated policies. They said that the kids have been very cooperative about this updated policy. Would you think they might be a little more antagonistic, or, you know, disruptive about giving or surrendering their phone, or whatever? But they've been very cooperative. They love the local control and the autonomy that has been provided for them to make these decisions. And that they have allowed the teachers to monitor the progress of the cellphone policy in their classroom. And when it becomes a distraction, that they appreciate the administrative team's support in supporting their classroom policies. Another question we asked was, how many cellphone infractions have you experienced so far this year? Now, when we sent this out, there, we didn't count the first two weeks of school, because, you know, kids are kind of getting used to the cellphone policy and other things like that. And so there was basically 50 days that had elapsed. And so we asked the principals how many cellphone infractions. You can read those up there, 0 to 5. 27% of our secondary schools reported having 0 to 5 incidences, all the way to 50 or more incidences, so basically, one a day. And that was reported by about 38% of our schools. And you can see the others there as well. We asked the principals, does your cellphone policy, has it helped with less bowling in the school, you know, increased safety, more learning? And 27% said it stayed about the same. And then, the other 73% said it's improved or improved significantly. We also asked our principals if they would like a district policy or not. You might be interested in that. So, 10% said yes. We had 30% that said that they would just like a district policy that supports a local or a site-based decision policy. And then, the other 60% said they would want just that local control, that site-based decision with our community council to make those decisions. We also asked our principals how they're going to assess the progress of their cellphone policy. And I'll let you read through those, but basically, their overall assessment will be to continue to work with their community councils. I really like that bottom one about the use of the data that they'll be presenting to their community councils, teachers, PTA, JSSE, their MAC groups, their MAC clubs, and their student body officers. So appreciate that, kind of that collaborative effort, that holistic effort of all stakeholders within their own building. And Rick's going to answer any questions that you might have. How's that?
No, I'm just pretty vague.
No, what questions do you have?
Rick's a great one.
I got my mic back. Hey, I think it's just important for the board to remember, this is a topic that we looked at in-depth in study session in the past and chose to take this local control approach, where we engaged with community councils to the extent possible. I've been some of these alternative settings. And so I'm really grateful to see that it's working well, and we're seeing the benefits of managing kids' cellphone time better. I like the local control, because it gives flexibility to kind of honor the differences between different ages of students in different buildings, and help build some digital citizenship. So recognizing that there could be legislation this year, this puts us in a good position, I think, to respond to that.
And I'm just going to say, and it's been a great first year for this practice and policy in the school, so.
Yeah, Kristen.
Just a quick comment. I think getting the community councils involved and the local control's been really great. I know with my, the element, I mean, sorry, junior high that my daughter goes to, they surveyed the parents, and it was like 97% were in favor of it. So having the parents involved and having their support is a huge, it's a huge asset to the whole process.
Can I make a comment, too?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, too. I did a school visit at West Point Junior High earlier this school year, and then went to a community council at Syracuse Junior High. And to hear the feedback from the administration, just how they feel like it's, they implemented, Syracuse Junior High implemented their policy of, I think, fourth term last year, and they have seen a big difference. And then, West Point Junior High, they implemented theirs at the beginning of the school year. And they were already seeing, like, it was making a big impact. So I like that it's local, that they get to decide.
Yeah, thank you for this information. It's very interesting. You know, last year, Emily and I worked on this a little bit, and had some great input from students that we brought in. And it was just very enlightening to hear from them. And I was wondering if maybe you have surveyed students to see how they're feeling about these new rules, or, and maybe from our SAC. And I wanted to ask maybe our student board members, I'll give them a second to think about this. But have you heard, have you maybe done a survey with the students?
At Centerville Junior High, where they've gone completely this year, it's been very successful students, and parents have been very supportive, and it's gone very well.
Okay, okay. I'd love to hear from the students themselves, too.
Yeah, I don't know that any school has surveyed students, but that's a great thought.
I think, and we could use, you know, our student advisory council to do that. I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you guys have anything to add about cellphone use that you could share with us? I would love to hear it.
Yeah, I think the initial switch for students would probably be hard already when things like the magnetic pouches or whatever are introduced, or they've seen that implemented at other schools. People, a lot of students, especially in high school, seem very against it. But I feel like a week or two later, after they're actually like performing better academically and socially, I think people would love the break from their phones. Like, it would be interesting to see the survey of like mental health and phone addiction and screen time, and then also kind of just their academic performance, and even athletics or social things. It's really easy to hide behind your phone, I would say.
Great, great thoughts, thank you. What about you?
Yeah, I would just say that I've definitely, like word-of-mouth heard that when students do put their phones in there, and when they're constantly putting their phones in there, that it does help them focus better in classes, and they're able to like, really be able to get the curriculum that we're learning and things. And so I feel like, like they feel like they're getting the help. And I also would love to see a survey about that as well.
Great feedback, thank you, and thank you for your work.
Is there anything that we didn't report?
I just had a, no, quick question. So on your survey, where you said, did you ask principals what would you like? Like a district-initiated policy? And then, the second one was that schools create their policy, like, meaning?
Yeah, there was three categories. So, one of the categories was, I think it was 10% of the respondents said that they would love to see a district policy.
Right, just kind of force everyone to do it, so they don't have to come up with it.
You know, and we kind of have a dress code, district dress code policy currently. But schools can go stricter to that, than that policy. And so, you know, could you have a general policy? Sure, but could the local control of the schools have a stricter policy? Why not? But I believe it was roughly 70%, 60-some percent said that they just want to keep it site-based. And then, roughly, whatever it was, 28% wanted to just know that whatever decision their school makes, it is supported by the district.
Okay, that was the second option I wasn't quite sure about. So, when they, when you say the school, does that mean principals in conjunction with JSSE, or principals in conjunction with JSSE and community council, like just everybody?
It would, well, definitely with their community council. But also, they like to include their school leadership teams as well, so.
Okay, I appreciate you guys taking that survey. And that was asking principals?
Yes.
So I, one question I had, and we don't have to get in too much detail, but, because I know we're going to have, we're looking at possible cellphone legislation coming out from the legislature in a few months. But have you talked about, because Centerville Junior, I was on a school, I visited over there, and they were talking about their particular policy. Because how each school implements it, do we have kind of a list of, or, of the different options? Because like, they, for example, if I remember right, you can look at your phone like the first five minutes or the last five minutes, like, for example, to submit your homework, take pictures, submit your homework. So it's like a ban, or maybe just a ban during most of the class, but not at the end? Or just a ban like during in-between times when they're going between classes?
Centerville Juniors is just between class breaks and lunchtime.
Right, okay.
Nothing during class, they have their computers, they can take pictures of their assignments if they need to.
They can?
Yeah, with their computer.
Okay, so they don't even use their phones? So I may be confusing it with another school, but, okay.
That's how, I think I've been to several schools that have.
Several schools still allow you to like take pictures with, because I know that's been a significant deterrent for my, one of my children, to not turning their homework in time, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Superintendent, before we move on? Okay, thank you. We've got our consent items next. Are there any items that a board member would like to request move to a business item? Ms. Barber?
I'd like to remove Consent Item 6, please.
Okay, great, we'll move the instructional materials to be our first business item.
I also need you to move Item Number 4. The Head Start, Early Head Start by federal mandate needs to be a business item.
Yeah, we worked with federal programs, and they said that we set up a process to do digital affidavits, and they said they could be consent items moving forward.
That's not what the federal auditor told us.
Okay, let's move it for tonight, and then we'll verify, so we have a good practice.
Is that our federal program?
Yeah. It was John Zerbakin worked with Head Start and gave that direction.
Okay.
But I'm happy to move it tonight, just so we're covering our bases, and then let's solidify that.
A year ago, when they did their annual audit, they, they weren't, they didn't criticize us, but they said that has to be done in an open meeting, by a separate vote. So I'll have to talk with John.
Great, so I'm going to move Items 4 and 6 to be standalone votes. So we need a motion to approve Consent Items 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8.
I'll make a motion that we approve Items 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, and 8.
I'll second that.
Thank you, a motion from Ms. Barber, and a second from Ms. Gerard. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, that's unanimous. Let's do our first vote on the Head Start, Early Head Start. Those reports are in your packet. This is the first time that they're in our packet since the beginning of the school year, because they don't do reports over the summer, so it reflects the first reports from the beginning of the school year that have been approved by their committees. So we need a motion for the Head Start, Early Head Start reports.
I move, we approve the Head Start, Early Head Start reports.
Second that? Thank you, a motion from Ms. Price, and a second from Ms. Hogan to approve the Head Start and Early Head Start reports. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that one's also unanimous. Next, we have instructional materials approval. And let's do a motion and a second, and then we can open it up for discussion. Ms. Bar- Ms. Barber?
I would move that we approve the instructional materials presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
First, a motion by Ms. Barber, a second by Ms. Gerard to approve the instructional materials as shown in your exhibit. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I mostly just wanted to add a discussion that could be added to the minutes. I thought it was fantastic when I was reading the proposed materials. It talked about how all of these had been through, the supplemental materials went through the open house process and there was an open house on October tenth, twenty-fourth, and November seventh for the public to view and discuss, which I think is a really fantastic process. I talked to TJ Strain that I would hope that we could get that out a little bit more and advertise a little more to parents that those are available. I looked at it and I realized I hadn't attended any of those and I went backwards and thought, I'm going to think of this as my parent, as a parent view, how would I have found these? And they are, it's good to know that it's the same Zoom link every single time and the dates are posted on the website. So I just wanted to make a reminder as part of the motion that we can maybe highlight those on the instructional materials page and then also remind parents that these are available so that we get a little more participation in those.
Thank you for that feedback. Any other questions or discussion about those instructional materials that you had an opportunity to review? Okay, so the motion was to approve those and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, that's unanimous. I invite Mr. Anofrio to come up and present, we have a couple policies, actually just one policy. Oh, you know what, Ben? I got out of order, I was looking at the consent items, I scared you. Dr. Toon is going to present on the proposed boundary study.
Jeff, do you have those slides? Okay, great. President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Superintendent Linford, Mr. Lefell, students and board members, it's great to be here with you today. Thanks for your little patience as we got this up and running. Today, we are going to follow our legally required protocol for initiating a boundary study that will affect elementary schools. It's an extensive boundary study. And in order to respond to the timeline needs that we have, we intend to do the boundary study in four different phases. And so Ms. Tracy Robbins and Mr. Doug Forsgren will explain those four phases to you and what will be considered in each of those phases and the timelines that we're using. I just wanted to remind us of a few requirements from the new legislation that was passed last spring. Each of these changes requires all of the board's formal action to be completed by a certain timeframe. A change that involves a boundary realignment is required to be done sixty days in advance of the effect date of the change, which is the first day of school. Any change that involves a closure is required to be done by December thirty-first, the year prior to the opening of the school. So if, for example, and we're not, this is just a hypothetical situation. If we had a decision to close certain schools or programs at this point, that decision would need to be formalized by December thirty-first in order for that decision to take effect the following school year. So the explanation that Ms. Robbins and Mr. Forsgren give, you'll kind of see which ones will involve those two separate timelines. Each of those timelines has different requirements that have to happen in advance of that final board approval. The first requirement is a vote in an open board meeting to initiate the process and that's what we're bringing to you today, is the vote to initiate the boundary study in four phases. And then we would conduct the study in its entirety and have the, and have the decision before the board and notified to parents via email and email for a boundary change a month in advance and for a boundary change that involves a closure, ninety days in advance. We need to announce the decision, we need to announce the public hearing ten days in advance of the final vote and that hearing needs to take place, one, one public hearing prior to the vote in the case of a boundary change and in the case of a closure, it's ideal if that public hearing can take place in the facility that's being closed. And then there needs to be at least one board meeting with public comment in advance of the vote for a boundary change and two board meetings in advance if it's a closure. So all those requirements, we'll, as administration, we'll help keep track of that and make sure that the the board president and vice president have an opportunity to put everything on agendas and attend to all of those timelines so we find ourselves squarely within compliance on the law. One quick reminder that sometimes slips our view. It's any, it's not just a school closure that is subject to these requirements. It's a, it's, they also call out like special magnet program closures. And in our district implementation, the programs that would be considered, those special programs are any deep programs for our gifted and talented students or any language immersion programs. So boundary changes that result in a closure of those programs needs to follow the closure criteria here. So again, we'll remind you and keep you on top of all that and make sure we don't miss our deadlines. Mr. Anofrio's been super helpful in interpreting the law and we'll work together with him to make sure we do it right. And so I'll turn the time now to Ms. Robbins and Mr. Forsgren who will explain the four phases and then we'll anticipate a motion from the board on each of those four phases.
Thank you, board, I appreciate that, Logan, for setting that up. We are going to ask, if I believe, if I remember right, we're going to ask for a motion after each explanation of each phase, if that's possible, just to keep things straight. Phase one is a study of a possible realignment of non-contiguous areas currently included in the boundary for Sunburst Elementary. The earliest possible implementation would be in fall 2025.
Okay, yeah, let, give everybody a second to look at the map and find those non-contiguous boundaries.
If you'll look, Sunburst Elementary is circled with a little box and a little red dot. Any boundary that has that same shade, if you go north or up, there's one, one little U-box, one further on the, on the, on the top side of the yellowy-orange block, which is Sand Springs Elementary and then one to the west. And then if you go clear across Hillfield, that little, I wish I had a pointer, a little.
You have Logan.
A little, it looks like kind of a, I don't know, like a polygon off to the right, up by the railroad tracks. That used to be Vavue Elementary and that now comes to Sunburst. And the pink school right next to that is Ellison Park, just to kind of keep yourself in. So Sunburst is right in the middle, to the left, your left, is Sand Springs and to your right is Ellison Park. Thank you, that's wonderful. Oh, he did, okay, all right.
So Ms. Robbins, do you need a motion for each phase?
Correct.
To just move forward?
Correct. And there's a motion, so if you'll look in your descriptions on, in your online agenda, the, there's some language offered there. So it would be a motion to approve Phase One to consider realignment of non-contiguous areas currently included for the boundary of Sunburst Elementary School with possible implementation plan for fall of 2025.
I second that.
After that being, I don't usually make motions as the chair, but I'm going to take it, that's my motion. Mr. Robinson seconds that. Any further questions or discussion? Well, Ms. Robbins is on that one. Go ahead, Julie.
Do you anticipate this affecting Heritage Elementary possibly?
Not this study, not this study. We, we, we've hired a consultant, Dr. Helene Van Natter, and she's done some preliminary looks and it looks like north is where we're going that really impacts this. And as we've done preliminary numbers, it's, it's really those, those areas that are really connected to the boundary of Sunburst.
So all in favor of the motion regarding Phase One, please say aye.
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 Thank you, that's unanimous, let's do Phase Two.
Wonderful, let's go to Phase Two. Phase Two is to study the possible realignment of boundaries in conjunction with the opening of Elementary School Number Two, which will be in Syracuse Elementary, or Syracuse, Utah. Earliest possible implementation for this is fall of 2025.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Ours is twenty-six. Okay, my apologies. If you look on this map now, you'll see where Syracuse Elementary is, which is the blue box up to the north. We have a roundabout guess that the school right down to the bottom that has the red dot is where the property is for the new school. So we would be looking at everything kind of west of Bluffridge, including Bluffridge Elementary going west. So west, Bluffridge, Syracuse, Cook, and then New Boundary Area.
I will move to approve Phase Two, which is to consider realignment of elementary school boundaries in conjunction with the opening of Elementary School Number Two in Syracuse with the possible implementation plan for fall of 2026.
Second that? Thank you, a motion from Ms. Gerard and a second from Ms. Hogan. Any other questions about the elementaries that would be impacted by that area? Thank you. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, the, then Phase Three would be taking a specific look at a situation that we have, in particular with Eagle Bay. Right now, we have an enrollment issue at Eagle Bay that we currently do not have in all English classes in our first and second grade. Honestly, we had probably about four in the second grade this year and a wonderful principal, Pomeroy, has worked with the parents to find alternative things that have worked both with the parents and the schools, whether that be variances or, or other solutions. This, we project that this will continue into next year. So next year, we would have no all English in first, second, and third grade. We, the numbers that are there in kindergarten, forty-eight, currently are twelve. Twelve of those are variances that are granted to the school to go to Eagle Bay in anticipation that they're going to be part of the dual language program. Dual language program, you really need two classes for the dual language and that's about enough to make two classes. And so our anticipation is that, again, that we have the same thing going on in the next year, leaving us with three grades. Three grades that currently have no all English. Ideally, we of course want to have an all, an all English program for every grade level. So we're asking for approval to study this and to find a temporary solution beginning at the, potentially beginning at the beginning of next school year for, for those students that may be in that first, second, third grade. Yeah, first, second, and third grade to provide them with an all English opportunity there. We, the reason it's temporary is because we, part of Phase Four would be looking at these boundaries as well and you'll see that just here in a second to see if there's a long-term solution.
Thank you. So this one's a motion regarding this temporary solution. Does somebody want to read that?
I move that we initiate a study for the possible temporary boundary alignment affecting individual grade levels at Eagle Bay Elementary and Canyon Creek Elementary.
Second. Thank you, so a motion from Ms. Hogan and a second from Ms. Powell. Any other questions or discussion on this one? Ms. Powell?
Do you anticipate this will affect Canyon Creek and Endeavor too?
Yes, we, we really were just trying to prevent, present the problem, which the problem is that Eagle Bay, Canyon Creek may be part of the temporary solution for the time being.
Eagle Bay too?
I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering who this might affect, this is my area.
Yeah, Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek, I, I mean, again, in our preliminary conversations, it would more than likely affect Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek as part of, you know, taking, maybe potentially taking some of those students.
But maybe not Endeavor, is that what you're saying?
Not, sorry, no, Endeavor hasn't been part of the discussion at this time.
President Mumford, that does give me a question. What if in this study, like, for example, Endeavor has to be looked in or, you know, one of the other schools? Does this motion cover pretty much any, any solutions?
So, the, the motion right now, it, it, I, I actually, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but I don't, I don't think I, I caught the fact that Eagle Bay was in that motion prior to it being submitted to, or sorry, Canyon Creek was in that. So my, I don't know, I don't know what to say here.
Why don't you just wing it?
It's my birthday.
It's your birthday, you can do whatever you want.
Hey, happy birthday Doug.
Sorry Doug.
Ms. Barber, it's his birthday. No, so, you, I mean, we maybe could have looked at Phase Four first. Phase Four will involve many other schools, also involving Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek. Phase Four may also involve a program or school closure and Ms. Robbins will kind of explain that. We don't intend to close the program or the schools at this point and nor do we know if we even will later or that may never be on the table at all. Phase Four is intended to solve the long-term problem and Phase Four may involve some other schools. But right now, the temporary solution will only involve Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek.
Okay, so we should have both of those in the motion, like I read?
I think the motion's correct. I think the motion should probably include a possible implementation date of 2025, though, if that's okay.
Okay, so do you want to amend your motion?
To include?
I don't, she included it.
She didn't say the name of the schools, though, do we have to have that? She did say the name of the schools.
The year wasn't stated as part of the motion.
Let's just, Ms. Hogan, if you'll restate the motion.
Include schools and date maybe?
Yeah, just go ahead and restate the motion and that way. It's, this is challenging because of this new state law. I mean, obviously the district's ongoing basis evaluating populations and thinking about things, but when we get in a position where change is more imminent, we want to make sure that we're fully compliant with these procedures. So we just want to document that accurately. So let's go ahead and update that motion and get a new second.
Okay, I amend my motion. I move that we initiate a study of possible temporary boundary alignment affecting individual grade levels at Eagle Bay Elementary and Canyon Creek Elementary to be implemented fall 2025.
Thank you. Second. Okay, so, sec, a motion from Ms. Hogan, a second from Ms. Powell addresses the two elementaries involved and the timeline. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Phase Four, here's where it gets more complicated, huh?
Here we go. President Mumford, thank you so much for clarifying that we do take this as elementary directors. We're looking at enrollment all the time among all of our schools. So this last phase, Phase Four, is more of a comprehensive study in looking at the declining enrollment across our district. We would like to project that we study future alignment, realignment of elementary schools that are south of Antelope Drive. The study will, will respond to past and anticipated enrollment declines in student enrollment and may include consideration of school closures. This is, again, a very comprehensive study. The reason for that and the timeline that this would include, and I also need to make sure that I add on, the study will include or may include the special magnet programs because some of our schools, many of our schools, south of Antelope Drive do have DEEP in them and are DLI, dual language immersion schools. So those will also be looked at, including Canyon Creek and Eagle Bay that you just talked about. Our earliest possible implementation, because we need the time necessary to fully study it, would be fall of 2026.
You want all of that in the motion? I mean, the dual language?
Yes, please, yes, please.
And I think it, it highlights that in that last sentence of the Phase Four paragraph, if, if someone makes that motion.
So I rec, I move that we approve to study future realignment of boundaries of all elementary schools south of Antelope Drive. The study may include consideration of school closure or closures and/or location changes for special magnet school programs with possible implementation plan no earlier than fall of 2026.
I'll second that.
Is that okay, Tracy?
I would like to actually put the, if I can, Logan, the language in of special programs to include DEEP and dual language immersion.
Okay, I, let me say again then. I recommend, I, I make a motion that we approve to study future realignment of boundaries of all elementary schools south of Antelope Drive. The study, the study may include consideration of school closure or closures and/or loco, location changes for special magnet school programs such as DEEP and dual language immersion with possible implementation plan no earlier than fall of 2026.
I'll second that one too.
Thank you, a motion for Mr. Robertson and a second for Ms. Gerard. Questions or discussion on that item?
I do have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Price and then Ms. Hogan.
So all school, like, all the way to the county line in North Salt Lake?
Yes, yes.
No.
Furthest south, so north would be Antelope Drive.
No, south of, south of Antelope Drive. No, south of, south of Antelope Drive, all the way to North Salt Lake.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have a huge auditorium for all the people who are going to protest this?
That's why it's a comprehensive study, section by section.
This is, I don't think I've ever seen one this big, ever, a boundary study.
So will this be done at the same time as the, like, the new elementary school boundaries, or is it kind of like that will come first and then?
That's what I would suspect. And truly, I believe the fall of 2026 is earliest. We wanted to get that on just as our earliest, because it is in compliance with the, with the law that Logan mentioned, but more than likely, it'll take a little bit longer than that.
And I do want to reiterate that much of what we're looking at in this study is our, our numbers that we looked at historically, year-round, all of the time. But because it may lead to, you know, potential, we are in declining enrollment, especially in the south end, we felt that, given the new state law, that we should, you know, we should take every measure to be cautious.
But we might be bringing it out in different phases?
That's correct.
Not one big?
That's correct.
Everything at once, okay.
That's correct.
Can I just, quick question. So the east side too, just everything south of Antelope?
Everything. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Van Natter is going to be very busy.
She is. Very excited.
Can I, can I add to that? And just to clarify, by and large, this will be a lot of digital work in terms of looking at numbers, projections, those things, not so much driving boundaries and thinking, hmm, you know, what would happen at this school and that school? That would be, i-if, if we were considering an actual boundary shift based on school with declining enrollment that are maybe, are going from robust programs to eliminating programs and maybe combining schools or those kinds of things, that would be a phase that would be, you know, well-planned out. This is to do a broad swath, really a thirty-thousand-foot view swath, to start looking at this. And again, our, we do this, we've done this as long as I've been in education. The new state law drives us to ensure that we're being very transparent with even this phase of the discussion, so that we, you know, we can get feedback. Much of the feedback and even concern, and that's the unfortunate part of this, we anticipate will cause concern for the majority of schools that really aren't going to be part of any, any serious study.
Any other question?
Anything else, Ms. Powell? Thank you. It, consistent with a lot of the information we've had about shifts in population in our county, it's probably a wise time to do it and be that comprehensive. So I think it's great. And I'd love to come and participate as a public commenter when it gets to my area. I appreciate it. The, the, just for the board's information, usually when we've done those boundary studies, we'll do continuous workshop items and agenda items and invite Dr. Van Natter. So this will be like a regular process where the board's informed of her findings and progress in these study areas over the next year and a half. Did we vote on number four? That was our discussion. Yeah, so stay there, Tracy. I think that was our discussion.
Yeah.
We've got the motion and the second from Robinson and Gerard, and we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of approval for Phase Four, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, another crowd pleaser, the calendar. I'm going to invite Ms. Keller forward. And before she speaks, I just really wanted to express appreciation. Kristin Hogan has served for, I think this is your second full year serving on the calendar committee, and just does a really excellent job representing the interests of families and educators and the board on this committee, along with lots of other participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Mumford and Vice President Gerard, board members, Dr. Linford, Mr. Luffel, and Kate. She went to Oak Hills when I was the principal there, and Simon, welcome. It's good to have you here. I'm here to discuss and present the proposed calendar. We had a group of thirty members that made up our committee, PTA, DSD employees, both classified and certificated, a school board member, Ms. Hogan, DEA and ESP leadership, and all six school directors. And you have the highlights in your packet. I don't need to go over those. And we met, like I said, we met three times, twice in September and once in October, and we tried to make it really transparent and intentional that everyone had, could, voice would be heard this time. So during the first meeting, we shared feedback on a Zoom call and looked at some options, and, and the members took home the options and, well, they had it online and a template, and they could make their own calendars, which some did. And then the next meeting, we met in person in groups and looked over the calendars and tweaked it to be how, what they, what would be an ideal calendar based on this, these mixed groups, and came up with three different calendars that were, could really work. And then the third meeting, we got into groups again, and two of the groups came up with the one, one calendar, even taking the teacher, the teacher comp day from spring break and putting it in April on the very same day, April twenty-fourth. And the other group wanted to start later and go after Memorial Day, but the majority voted, and we did come to consensus that we would ta-take the calendar that starts on August fourteenth and ends before Memorial Day. And there, there is a lot of controversy with the August start date, with the weather, and the teacher prep, prep day starting earlier. And we had, I felt we had really good conversations about that, and felt like voices were heard in the process. So if you approve the calendar tonight, the Communication Department will put it out for public comment until November thirtieth, and we'll gather the comments, consider them, and make adjustments if needed. Then we'll present, I'll present the calendar to you again on December third during the Board Business Meeting. And the policy doesn't dictate that we put it out for comment, but as a courtesy to the community, we do that. And we, I know, I've learned over the years, some people interpret, interpret the public comment as a public vote, but it is not a vote. We just really do want the feedback to help construct a cal, create calendars that are best, work best for education. Obviously, that's our first goal, is to have an academically sound ca calendary. And so, and then in an effort to be really transparent and get a lot of, open up the feedback, period, Terri Hall and Noel Olson are going to notify the public about the calendar. They'll send out an email, they're, they'll place a banner on every school and district webpage with a link to where parent, people can leave comments. They will post about it on social media, and they'll put it on the district's homepage newsfeed. I know this is kind of a tight turnaround, but we wanted to make sure that everybody got the word and had a chance to look and comment if they desired to. And then they're also going to answer questions raised in the comments by producing some short informational videos. So I present the 2024-25 school year calendar to you in anticipation of a motion to approve it on first reading and answer any questions you might have.
So we're, let's take a motion, and then we can do discussion.
I move the, here we accept the 2025-2026 school calendar on a first reading.
Oh, yeah, I said the wrong calendar date, sorry. I said twenty-four, twenty-five. I meant twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yep.
Thank you.
I was, I was right.
You were right.
For once.
Are you ever wrong?
Okay, so we have a motion. We need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson and Ms. Gerard. Let's open that. Are there any questions regarding the calendar? Ms. Hogan, why don't you go first and speak from your committee work?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about being on the calendar committee, which has been such an interesting experience and great experience. The feedback, I think you would agree, mostly was about the early start date. And I think it's important for the public to understand that we basically have, in my opinion, we basically have two choices. Either to start early, earlier in August, and then be able to have the semester break before Christmas, which is helpful for our secondary schools, and then get out before Memorial Day, or switch back to how we did it a few years ago when we started a little bit later, but then we didn't get out of school until usually the week after Memorial Day. The problem that we have is, or, I don't know if it's a problem, but the fact is we have graduation already scheduled for a couple of years in advance. And so, if as a board, we ever decide we want to look at that and, and switch things back the other way, it would probably take a couple of years to get that to work. So I, I guess I just want to be clear to the public that the reason we're starting early is there's not really a way to make the dates work if we want those other two things that people also find important. So there's a lot of pros and cons to both calendars, and it's just kind of trying to figure out the direction we want to go as a school district.
Thank you for saying that.
Go ahead, Bridget. This is, this is a question not about this particular calendar, and thank you so much. I know how difficult this is. It's our job, so thank you, everyone who's served on the committee and for everything, too. Just a general question that I got from the school community council meeting this morning. So you know how we have parent-teacher conferences listed on here? A teacher at one of the schools asked if we have to put that on the calendar, or if we could give autonomy to the schools to hold their parent-teacher conferences when they wanted to instead of following the calendar? Or do we have to put those on there?
Well, I did talk with the secondary directors today about that, because this was a secondary question, right?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
And they told me that it was a negotiated item, and it, it's, they do need to be where they are, and if it goes through negotiations, it could be changed.
Okay, so that's something that if they want to do that, they'd have to go through the process of, kind of.
And I did, I did email her back about that.
Maybe it's the same person?
Probably.
Maybe. So, anyway, probably. Okay. Thank you for answering that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Powell?
I said a comment. Is there any way we could get community councils involved? Just say, hey, is something that you might be interested in putting on your agenda? I know ma- maybe not everyone will meet in between now and that period of time, but have you guys ever thought about asking community councils to input on the calendar?
Well, we have parents, and so some are, I would imagine, could be on a community council. So we try to involve parents and classify, well, a lot of the people on the committee, whether they're an employee or not, are parents. And the, and so, as far as answering your exact question, I have not thought of asking just community council to be on it. I guess I just figured that parents were part of that.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. Yeah, we have several parents on the committee, several teachers, several people involved in the district, administrators. There's a pretty big group already that we're trying to make this decision, so I don't know if we want to add further groups, like, make it more complicated.
And, and we didn't even get every member of the committee to show up to the, to our meeting.
That's unheard of.
Yeah. But we, and we have, and like I said, some of our parents are also, she was on, one in particular was on the committee as a parent, but she is also a teacher.
So how big is this committee?
Thirty people.
Thirty people.
But there is a great opportunity for, I mean, parent, community council members, like all parents, will have this public comment, period. And I would hope they engage as involved parents.
Yeah, and, and sometimes people rotate off the committee. We'll have, I know of at least one who told me she's going to be off because her child is graduating. So, and usually, the board has suggested parents to be on the committee.
So is that, is that an open pro, do we put a call out for people who, who want to be on it? How does that process work? Or is there no particular?
I just had, when, I just had.
You inherited a list, probably.
Yeah, I did inherit a list, and next to the names were, who, the parent names was, was the committee, or the board member who suggested them. So I, to tell you the truth, I'm not sure. I think.
We haven't had a, like, a defined process. It's a lot different than the materials review committee where we're rotating people, but often when patrons have significant concerns or really engage in the calendar process, I'll include Ms. Keller on the email and, potentially, they might be a great committee member, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there was one, I, there have been members, parent members who, just as President Mumford said, were very vocal, and we said, well, would you like to be on the committee? And they were on it.
So know that that's an option, just, you know, when you are getting feedback that she keeps her running list. Ms. Barber, you had a hand up down at that end.
I was, this is purely just a comment. I was just going to repeat something that I've said at a couple different community council meetings about the calendar, and it's, it could probably go for everything that I've learned in my life, because when I first started, I was, I have so many ideas on the calendar, and I am going to fix it. And then you look at it more deeply, and you're kind of go, oh, actually, there's a reason that these are all how they are. And there's a reason, like Kristen said, that we start early in August. And it's, from my perspective, and why I've changed a lot, is it's academic reasons. You know, like, vacations are important, absolutely, school time, weather, those are all really important. But when you look at it from an academic lens, my perspective totally changed on the whole calendar, and I think you guys have done a really good job.
Thank you. I don't know if this helps, but about twenty-two of the forty-two districts started this past year between August fifteenth and seventeenth. And St. George started on Monday. We started on a Thursday. They, so it's, I feel like we're doing all right.
Yeah. There's just, there's just no way to stretch it out and get everything done. And especially think, my feedback on the first year that we had the, the semester break before Christmas, I think a lot of people were kind of taken by surprise, and teachers and students. And I think the more that we get there, I've had so many teachers say that has been really nice, and they really appreciate it, like, ours are really intentional professional days that we have. You know, the day after fall break was a good one, and Halloween. And I just, other school districts, I've had, talked to people who, they just said their calendar is a little more sporadic. They liked how intentional we thought about it for teachers, so I think this is a good, really good calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you. So good feedback from Ms. Hogan to remember, like, in the long-term calendar philosophy, it does require a couple of years is, as a change, and also that we have really emphasized those HVAC systems in our schools and addressing that over time. So we need a final vote. All in favor of the 2024-2025 calendar on a first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Hogan, for your participation.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the naming of our new junior high school, number eighteen, and Director Bodley is going to present on that.
Hi, I get to have, like, the fun conversation. So, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, board members, nothing brings a community together more than a new school, right? So I got the great opportunity to work on this, and just shout out to Tracy Robbins, who helped me when she did all of her elementary stuff, and then our Communications Department, who helped me as we started kind of going through all of this. They put together all of the social media and helped us get that email out. So we appreciate, I appreciate them and their support. If you'll just, Jeff, click to the next, or is there, never mind, I can click. So this was our process. First, we wanted to make sure that we had enough of our students and our parent population participating. So on October first, we put out our first initial communication to just let people know, like, hey, now is the time to check your next school to attend with your registrars, making sure that you're in the right boundary. We do have a lot of, like, dual-language immersion programs in the elementary schools, so sometimes that may shift their boundary or other programs. So we wanted to make sure all of those people who thought they should be going to the new junior high were actually getting the communication. So we started off with that. And then on October seventh, that's when we opened up the survey to take names. So we just collected as many names, any suggestions. So we just collected as many names, any suggestions that they had from parents and from students, and it went to fifth, sixth, and seventh grade students, no, sorry, I apologize, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, so those students that would be coming into the junior high next year. So that's, we collected all of that, and then we met and kind of reviewed all of the votes and determined from there the top four key names. So, when I say that, when we get to this next part, I'll just move to that, when, for that survey, we received 228 responses, and we really, as you can imagine, 228 responses, nearly 200 different suggestions, right? So we really just looked at common language or unique phrases that were in there. So within that, we had a lot of things, antelope, the word bay, grand, horizon, island, lake, and salt and west. We automatically excluded antelope and west because of other schools in that area that were very close to that, but we landed on the recommendations, top recommendations being Bayview, Grandview, Horizon, and Lakeview, because our top thing was view. Everybody had something with view in there. But interestingly enough, we set out that second portion of voting, which went from October 23rd through November 6th, and we had 1,186 responses for that, and the top votes, as you can see here, weren't the view votes, right? So, the top vote was Horizon Junior High with 463 votes, and then coming in second would have been Lakeview and Bayview, third, Grandview. So, with that in mind, what we would recommend is that we select Horizon Junior High as the name for Junior High 18. And then, I think they vote on this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, that's what you, okay, that's what we're recommending.
So we need a motion, and remind me, which board member is this in your immediate area? Emily? Yeah, if you defer to you to make the motion.
Okay. I move that we accept the name of Horizon Junior High for Junior High number 18.
Second. Thank you, so we have a motion from Ms. Price and a second from Ms. Powell. Any further discussion or questions about that great name? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next bit of this would just be our next step, so what you can look forward to is our Communications Department, is they're going to help us get all of our social media accounts going, and we'll post those with now Horizon Junior High as the name for that. We'll also start to get their school website set up, and then we will start the voting on mascot and school colors. So that will all start in December, we'll do that throughout the month of December, and then I will come again in January with the final mascot and colors. Any other questions about that?
Excellent, we'll look forward to it, thank you, Chadley Bodley. Awesome, great, Mr. Anelfrio, now we're ready for you.
Seems like a long time ago, President Mumford. President Mumford, members of the board, we have our second reading of school policy 6F-105, tax increment financing. This is a new policy, that's why we read it twice. I can start from the top and just start reading if you'd like.
Yes, please. Like a bedtime story.
We recommend that you pass this on final reading.
Okay. This one's been out for review and public comment, it was also reviewed a second time by the Policy Committee, just for your information, so we're ready for a motion on 6F-105.
I'll move that we approve policy number 6F-105, tax increment financing policy on a second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you, a motion for Ms. Gerard, a second from Ms. Price. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Anelfrio, and our last three are capital projects, Mr. Luffel, go ahead.
I think I can do these within an hour or so, so. You've heard enough from me tonight. As part of the 22 bond, we had planned to build three tracks with artificial turf at three junior highs. We've gone through the architect selection commit, or process, Weston and Brian have done that, and we would like to recommend, bless you, we would like to recommend Design West as the architect, having the highest scores of that evaluation process.
Thank you, so we just need a motion to approve Design West as the architect for these three tracks.
I move that we approve the selection of Design West architects for the auxiliary turf and track projects, architect, as the architect selection.
I'll second that.
Thank you, a motion for Mr. Robinson and a second from Ms. Price. Any questions for Mr. Luffel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is the relocation of our print services shop, which is currently right behind us over here. They have outgrown their britches by a lot, they've trip over and have a really fun time trying to do, they do an amazing job and they serve our district very well. It's come time for us to consider moving them to Building C5 out at Freeport. We put together a preliminary plan with the architect, which gives them double the space, which will give them the space they need for their storage and their machines. This is a fund balance project, we have the money set aside for this already in our fund balance program, have million, $3,88,616 to Will Meg Construction. We would recommend the board approve that.
Thank you, so we just need a motion to approve that low bid from Will Meg Construction.
I'll move that we approve the bid from Will Meg Construction for the amount of $3,88,616.
Second.
Thank you, a motion from Ms. Barber and a second from Mr. Robinson. Any other questions about that relocation? Ms. Gerard?
I don't have a question, but I don't know if Lori is still here.
She was here earlier.
She was here for so long. She, she does such a great job in our, our print shop, yeah, and so I just wanted to give a shout-out to her, she waited for a long time, but, anyway.
I just wonder if we could get, like, a diffuser that made it still smell like the print shop when you walk back there, just for nostalgia sake? Okay, Dr. Linford says no.
No, we'll make good use of this space.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving Will Meg Construction in the amount noticed, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, last motion of the night, Mr. Luffel.
Last one, after the board has just surplus Fremont Elementary, we put that on the market for 45 days, entertained bids from the community, received four bids, the best bid was from Shed Development LLC in the amount of $4.1 million, which matches the appraised value that we had on that school. We would recommend accepting that offer from Shed Development LLC.
Thank you, so we need a motion to approve the sale of Fremont Elementary School to Shed Development.
I move that we approve the sale of Fremont Elementary to Shed Development LLC.
I'll second that.
Thank you, so a motion from Mr. Robinson, a second from Ms. Gerard, to approve the sale of Fremont Elementary, which was previously surplus, that's the amount of $4.1 million. Any other?
Do we need to amend the motion to include the sale amount?
The official motion, John, can you put $4.1 million in the motion?
No.
Please.
How much?
$4.1.
$4.1 million.
$4.1?
Yes, sir.
So we're, amend the motion to approve the sale to Shed Development LLC for the amount of $4 million?
$4.1.
$4.1 million.
Yes.
Second?
Thank you, so motion for Mr. Robinson and a second from Ms. Gerard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Before we conclude the meeting, just appreciation to our student board members, you survived the longest board meeting that any student board members have been at. And we do need a motion to go into a closed session for the purpose of personnel and property. I move to go into closed session for the purpose of personnel and property. Thank you, a second from Ms. Barber, so it was a motion from Ms. Powell, a second from Ms. Barber, roll call, John Robinson? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.